What's the name?
The NSO. I think I'm...
You already own.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right here?
Yes, ma'am.
You already there?
We have two minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Then you listen to the slots and scroll out too.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The October 14th, 2021 meeting of Alabama State Board of Education will now come to oral. Dr. Coley Chestnut, Senior Pastor of Fresh Anointing House of Worship located in Selma, who is married to our colleague, Dr. Tanya Chestnut, will now offer the invocation. Dr. Chestnut.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody today, and we thank the Lord for allowing us this experience. Just before I pray, I want to encourage our hearts from Psalm 46 where it says, "God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble. Therefore we will not fear, though the earth be removed, and though the mountains be carried in the midst of the sea; though the waters thereof roar and be troubled, though the mountains shake with the swelling thereof, there is a river; the streams whereof shall make glad the city of God, the holy place, the tabernacle of the Most High. God is in the midst of her; she shall not be moved. God shall help her, and that right early." Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you that we can come and petition you this morning. We thank you for the congregation of heaven, and we thank you for being inspired in your word this morning where you remind us that sometimes the earth is conflicted, sometimes things get out of sort, get out of order, sometimes we have problems and we have trouble that we have to navigate through, such as the earth in a time like we live in today. But then you also remind us that there is a place inside of God. There's a place in the earth where we can find, if we search with all of our heart, there's a place where peace will flow, there's a place where joy and gladness will come forth out of, there's a place where everybody can come and drink from the waters that you provide for us, and we are asking now that you will allow such an experience to take place. Our prayer this morning, Father specifically, is that you will rest upon the school board members, their leadership. We ask that you will help our governor to govern, to make the decisions, oh God, that will help heaven and earth. We pray, Father, for each member and as they make decisions concerning the children, the children of the state of Alabama in our classrooms, to help them, Lord God, to navigate the terrible and difficult times that they're growing up in, a time of danger, a time of, oh God, unfortunate events, but Lord, you're going to help us. That's your promise in your word, that God is in the midst. God will help her, and that right early. We're calling on your help right now, and we ask it now, in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Chestnut. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute and pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance is that I am the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Bell?
Present.
Dr. Chestnut?
Present.
Governor Ivy?
Present.
Dr. McCarty?
Mrs. McRae?
Dr. Reynolds?
Present.
Dr. Richardson?
Present.
Mrs. West?
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler? Governor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. The quorum is present. We will now consider a motion to temporarily suspend certain provisions of the Alabama Administrative Code related to the requirement for the Alabama State Board of Education to vote by raised hand the provisions related to the establishment of a quorum by physical presence and meeting by electronic means. Is there a motion to suspend the rules in this manner?
I so move.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler? Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Item E, we will now consider a motion to approve the agenda for October 14th, 2021 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second, West.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy? Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We will now consider a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2021 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2021 meeting?
So moved, Chestnut.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Richardson.
Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Item G. Ms. Thornton, is anyone signed up to speak today?
Yes, ma'am, we have 11 speakers.
Okay. We'll call on Attorney Swan to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you, Governor, for the recognition. My name is Jason Swan. I'm the General Counsel for the Department of Education, and at this time on the agenda, the public speaker portion, I've got a list of folks who've signed up to speak, if you've signed up prior to the, prior to this portion, but I want to go over a couple of basic, basic rules. First of all, I can definitely speak for the board on this, that everybody appreciates your input. This is part of the process, and we appreciate everybody coming down and, and giving their opinions on these important topics that are before the board. As far as the ground rule, ground rules go, I'm going to read out the order of the speakers, and if you would, when I kind of read your name out, if you'll kind of come and stand next to the wall here in that order, that would, you know, help us expedite the process. Also, you can only address matters that are before the board, so if it's not on the agenda, it is outside of the purview of, of your, your address. Also, please maintain proper decorum when speaking, if you would. Also, if you'll identify yourself, I'll read your name out, but please identify yourself and then who, if anybody you represent, an entity, and if you don't, obviously you don't have to do that, but you'll have up to two minutes to speak. We have a timer out front, it's clearly marked so you can see it, so please be mindful of the time periods to make sure everybody gets their time to speak. Okay? Well, at this time, let me read out the names of the people who have signed up, and if you will, again, if you'll come and stand in this order. Hamida Labye, Kiana Mitchell, number three is Virginia Applebaum, number four, Camille Bennett, number five, Scotty Simpson, number six, Bernard Simpleton, or Simmleton, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, Philip Ensler, Bobby Mays, Karen Barwick, Reverend Rayford Mack, and Terri Michael. I'm sorry? Okay. All right. Ms. Labye, Ms. Labye, you have two minutes, and when you start talking, the clock will start running.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Hamida Labye, and I would like to thank the distinguished members of the Department of Education and Governor Ivy for this opportunity to testify today on behalf of the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund. As longtime civil rights and racial justice advocates, the Legal Defense Fund urges the Department of Education to reject the resolution in support of teaching an accurate history of racism and sexism in this country that includes the experiences and struggles of all Americans, including Black Americans. Discussing our painful history and its present day manifestations can be difficult, but these conversations are essential to facilitate learning that benefits all students and enables them to become critical thinkers. This resolution also risks undermining quality education and preventing educators from doing their job when Alabama is facing critical teacher shortages. The resolution's broad and vague language fails to clearly define what are permissible discussions of racism and sexism and omits any objective measure for implementing such a rule, which may have a chilling effect, all to avoid the unlikely risk of discomfort. Importantly, this resolution may also violate rights to equal protection, freedom of speech and expression, as well as due process rights not to be subject to vague and overbroad prohibitions which are guaranteed by the United States and Alabama constitutions. The resolution, therefore, is not only bad education policy, but also may be unlawful. We stand here today in the first capital of the Confederacy, in the state where the last American slave ship was discovered, the birthplace of the civil rights movement and the home to many historically Black colleges and universities. The racial terror and discrimination experienced by Black Alabamians, including the Tuskegee Experiments, the 16th Street Baptist Church bombing, Bloody Sunday, and over 300 recording lynchings, still impact Alabamians today. Indeed, my grandmother, Claudina Del Smith, born in 1932 in Crenshaw County, has vivid memories of picking cotton in the segregated South. Her story and the stories of millions like her from across the state and country deserve to be told and deserve to be learned as a part of our shared understanding of present day structural inequality. We urge you to reject the proposed resolution and focus on meeting the urgent needs of Alabama students and communities. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Labye. The next person on the list is Kiana Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, you have the floor. Again, when you start speaking, the clock will start, and please be mindful of the clock.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Kiana Mitchell. I'm a parent, an advocate, and a concerned citizen. I'm here today to ask that you all reconsider this resolution, which will exacerbate an already wide-scale problem of spreading false history and narratives. The setting that this resolution will have the most impact is likely history, civics, and social studies courses where students will be deprived of the truth based on comfort. Telling the history of this nation accurately is uncomfortable, but it's necessary. It holds us accountable for promises that have not yet come to pass, such as liberty and justice for all, and it also challenges us to continue to seek solutions and reconciliation. No one is asking children to apologize or take responsibility for things they had no part of, however, it would be unfair to them and those still suffering from the effects of racism and systemic inequality to rob them of the truth and the opportunity to do and be better. Alabama does not have to regress. We could be a part of the positive changes that are inevitably coming. Permanently adopting this, this rule is a sign of being resistant to progress, and it is not something that we, the people, parents, educators, or constituents are in favor of. I personally want my children to learn the truth of our history, the good and the bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Next up, Virginia Applebaum?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for letting me speak to you today. My name is Virginia Applebaum, and I testify today in my own capacity and not as a representative of any group or organization. The proposed changes we are discussing today state that the State Board of Education specifically prohibits local boards of education from offering K-12 instruction that indoctrinates students in social or political ideologies or theories that promote one race or sex above another. All K-12 instruction, Alabama Course of Studies standards, professional development, and other activities shall be in accordance with the most current State Board resolution regarding intellectual freedom and nondiscrimination. This change, like others in a number of states, seems to be rooted in a misunderstanding of critical race theory. It is not a concept that would make any individual, and this is to quote from the resolution, to feel guilt or anguish solely because of their race or sex. Critical race theory is the idea that social institutions exist with racism that is inherent in the laws, rules, and procedures that lead to different races having different outcomes. Critical race theory does not propose that those living now are responsible for the acts of those who lived and acted in the past. What critical race theory does propose is that white people who are now living are morally responsible to rectifying the mistakes of the past. Germany educates children extensively on the Nazi Party and the evils that were perpetrated by the Nazis. This is not done to make children feel anguished. It is done, while it may be an uncomfortable topic, the German educational system sees the greater good that history does not repeat itself because German citizens learn their real history. To those concerned about our history, I would challenge you to insist that the truth of our history be told or run the risk of being called out as cowards by the history that has yet to be written. Have the courage to speak the truth to upcoming generations. I thank you for your time.
Okay, the next speaker, Ms. Bennett, Ms. Camille Bennett?
My name is Camille Bennett, and I'm the founder and executive director of Project Say Something. In an effort to energize white supremacist culture, and just before the 2020 elections, Trump issued an executive order banning the discussion of how racism influences U.S. policy, also known as critical race theory. Less than a year later, one of Alabama's Republican legislators answered Trump's dog whistle and prefiled a bill banning critical race theory from public schools. Several months later, the Board of Education followed suit. The emergency resolution strictly prohibits the indoctrination of students into political ideologies that promote one race over another. Ironically, the resolution itself was created to support political ideologies that support one race over another. The resolution inappropriately implies that teaching Alabama's history of slavery could lead to the maltreatment of white students for the mistakes of their ancestors. Nothing in our past or present suggests that white children are at risk of psychological abuse and punishment because they are learning about the oppression of Black folks. I've spent years engaging white children in conversations about Black history. One of my fondest memories, after teaching a predominantly white class of fifth graders the importance of the Children's March of Birmingham and how children led the way to desegregation, they leaned into the challenging conversation, and the students ended our session with one final question. Can you teach us how to march?
Scotty Simpson is next. Mr. Bernard Simmleton?
Good morning, Governor, Dr. Mackey, and board members. My name is Bernard Simmleton. I'm president of the Alabama State Conference of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. The NAACP is proponent of teaching the facts as it pertains to the history of this country and this state. The NAACP has and continues to fight for equal education and equal access to quality, fact-based education. As I stated when I was here in August, the resolution teaching that one race is superior to another race likes merit, and to write similar language into Alabama code further highlights the misunderstanding by members of the Alabama Board of Education on the importance of teaching factual history. No matter how ugly it is, we cannot ignore the hideous past of Alabama and this nation. The NAACP challenged the executive, judicial, and legislative branches of its government to tackle the more important document that governs the state, the 1901 Constitution, with the same veil that you are tackling, teaching one race is superior to another race, an issue that does not exist. As I stated in August, the Alabama School Board should concentrate their efforts on selling, setting policy that will eliminate the disciplinary disparity where our children of color are concerned, especially our young Black male students. According to Public Affairs Research Council of Alabama in 2017, Black students accounted for 60.19% of total infraction, while white students made up 35.95% of infractions. The Alabama School Board should also concentrate its efforts on determining why there is a significantly higher number of Black students enrolled in special education compared to the Black makeup of students in the population. Because, because of these and many other factors, too numerous to mention in this setting, the Alabama NAACP asks the board members to not codify this resolution by making it part of the Administrative Code of the state of Alabama. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person on the list, Mr. Philip Ensler.
Good morning. I am a lawyer, a former Teach for America Montgomery Public Schools teacher, and I am standing here today as a proud Jew. Deuteronomy instructs us to quote, "Not forget the things your eyes have seen, or let them fade from your heart as long as you live. Teach them to your children and to your children after them." As Jews, we believe all children should learn about the Holocaust to make the world a more inclusive, just, and peaceful place for all. As a child, learning this history did not make me feel inferior, nor did it make me think that all Germans are at fault. It had the opposite effect. I see how far my people have come, and it motivated me that much more to embrace my Jewish identity. As previously stated, in Germany, they teach Holocaust history because they know that no matter how uncomfortable it may be, they must teach it to prevent history from repeating itself and to heal. In the same way, teaching systemic racism here will not make Black children feel inferior. There are already many ways that you do that by allowing them go to schools named after generals that fraud to preserve slavery. Nor will it make all white people feel at fault. In the way knowing my history empowers me, it will empower them, and perhaps that is what some of you are most afraid of. Yet, Governor, respectfully you and others, are using our children as political pawns to earn cheap political points as you run for reelection. So I will conclude with this. I have never been to Germany to visit the sites where the camps were, but when I do, if you vote today to approve these rules and violate God's instructions from Deuteronomy to teach full history, I will say a special prayer that our children in Alabama are never forsaken again by leaders like some of you all.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, please refrain from your, from clapping and everything else till we get done with the, with the process, please, so we can hear everybody.
Good morning. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak. Bobby Mays is my name, and I'm honored to serve as the president of the Elmore County NAACP Branch 5026. And I'm here today in strong opposition of the Alabama Board of Education Resolution entitled declaring the preservation of intellectual freedom and nondiscrimination in Alabama's public schools. This resolution is concerning to me for a number of reasons. One, it's important to me that Alabama public schools provide an inclusive and comprehensive education that represents the history of all persons, especially marginalized people, because all too often, their contributions, their trials, their struggles, and their historical ability to persevere through such daunting obstacles is left untold in mainstream channels. I am convinced that this resolution is a product of a coordinated effort to suppress the factual teaching of our nation's history and to deny that Black people experienced some of the worst treatment heaped upon one human being by another human being. Right here in our fair city of Montgomery, thanks largely to the untiring work of Bryan Stevenson and others of the Equal Justice Initiative, there is an unending story that depicts almost 400 years of slavery in these United States, where Alabama often was at the very top of the list in carrying out atrocities against human beings with Black skin like mine. While I would like it very much if this history did not exist, the truth is, it does exist. I believe the person on record as making, as the maker of this resolution was a Mr. Wayne Reynolds. Can you imagine what would happen if Mr. Reynolds had proposed a resolution that would forbid and criminalize the teaching of history associated with the Holocaust? Heaven forbid. I find it no less absurd that he or anybody else would introduce or propose a resolution that is the subject of, before us today. It's also important that the students learn the truth about the role of slavery, the legacy of Jim Crow segregation, the civil rights movement in Alabama's history. Knowing this history is especially important to all fair-minded and forward-thinking persons, especially those interested in advancing racial justice. This resolution, if allowed to stand, would prevent students from learning this history. I dare say, most of Alabama's educators are dedicated professionals who go above and beyond the call of duty and give themselves fully to teaching history, not just Alabama history, but complete history, even though that history was often dark and jury. All of this, the good, the bad, and the ugly, is Alabama's history. It's American history, and it should be taught in the most unadulterated manner possible. And those who teach in this manner should be able to do so without any cloud of criminal activity hanging over them. I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next on the list is Ms. Karen Barwick, and please keep your comments in general and don't direct any comments towards any particular person, please. That's also part of the decorum.
My name is Karen Barwick, and I was born and raised in Alabama. I'm retired and live in St. Clair County. I have driven two hours to be here in order to have two minutes of your time this morning. I was educated in the Alabama Public Schools in the 50s and 60s when we learned history from such books as No Alabama textbook for 4th graders that apologized for the Ku Klux Klan, blamed the Civil War on Abraham Lincoln, ignored lynching and Jim Crow, and looked at slavery as some kind of workforce development program. So many lies told in the name of education. So many wrongs committed in the whitewash of the past. Black people were portrayed as cartoonish into the 60s and 70s as incompetent and inferior and foolish. Alabama's history books told generations of students not to worry because it all ended well. Because of segregation, I didn't even meet a person of color until my early twenties. I now consider many of them my dearest friends. I'm sure you already know that critical race theory is not taught in Alabama schools, except perhaps law schools. The core idea is that racism doesn't just stop at the individual bias or prejudice, but that it's something ingrained in our policies, legal systems, and institutions. To understand critical, critical race theory, one must have critical thinking skills. Apparently, you don't intend to teach that in our public schools. The resolution aims to prohibit or impede the teaching and education- The resolution aims to prohibit or impede the teaching and education of students concerning what are termed divisive concepts. These divisive concepts, as defined in numerous bills around the country, are a litany of vague and indefinite buzzwords and phrases, including, for example, that any individual should feel or be made to feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological or emotional distress on account of that individual's race or sex. Since when can we legislate feelings? Americans of all ages deserve nothing less than a free and open exchange about history and the forces that shape our world today, an exchange that should take place inside the classroom as well as in the public realm generally. To ban the tools that enable those discussions is to deprive us all of the tools necessary for citizenship in the 21st century. A whitewashed view of history cannot change what happened in the past. I'm running out of time, so I just wanted to say that I have great concern about this effect that it will have on teachers and the fact that there are already three prefiled laws in the House to make teaching anything related to critical race theory as a fireable offense. I think that is dangerous and very concerning. I'm going to cut this short. I hope that you will reconsider your resolution from August and that you will vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barwick. Next, Reverend Rayford Mack. Reverend Mack?
Protocol being established by previous presenters. My name is Rayford Mack, and I'm speaking to all of us as a concerned citizen. On August the 12th, the Alabama Board of Education passed an anti-truth resolution titled declaring preservation of intellectual freedom and non-discrimination in public schools, which may prohibit educators from teaching the full and accurate history of racial discrimination and civil rights in Alabama and the United States. We are here today because of our, America's inability to deal with race and racism. We have never reckoned with slavery and the impact that slavery still has on our lives today. The aftermath of the Civil War, the Dred Scott decision, which held that a black man was not a citizen and had no rights that a white man had to respect. I don't have to imagine what it's like to be a part of a segregated educational system. I'm a product of that system. And as I look around, I can see other victims of that system. These, we all are victims of that segregated educational system. I enjoyed my social studies class. I enjoyed reading adventures to reading. There were no children of color in my first and second grade reader. Dick and Jane never had color. For my rights to be represented, and where was the Board of Education advocating for my rights to be represented? For all the children of Alabama. In closing, our children are a lot stronger than we give them credit. We come into this world as an empty vessel, not knowing anything. The people around us are responsible for teaching us what we know. They teach us how to walk, how to talk, how to love, who not to love, and even who to hate. The Board of Education resolution may penalize schools and educators for teaching our full history and providing an inclusive education. It is dangerous, it is a dangerous step backwards that has emerged from coordinated national effort to suppress our nation's history and to deny the experience of black people and other people of color. We are here today because of America and our inability to deal with race and racism in our community. Thank you very much.
Reverend? Okay, the last speaker, Teri Michael. Ms. Michael?
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am Teri Michael. I am a member of the Birmingham City School Board. However, today, I am here speaking on behalf of myself. In your resolution, it states that concepts that impute fault blame, a tendency to oppress others, or the need to feel guilt or anguish to persons solely because of their race or sex violate the premises of individual rights. It goes on to say, note that therefore, there's no place in professional development for teachers, so on, so on, so on, and that such concepts should not be taught to students. So my, I want to point out with that statement that our educators need to understand and teach to the whole child. And the truth is, systemic racism affects our students in Birmingham almost on a daily basis. Teachers need to know and understand that in order to have the biggest impact on our students, they need to be aware, they need to be trained, they need to be taught about the systemic racism and the climate and culture that our children live in. But according to you and your resolution, educating teachers and our students about systemic racism is not allowed because white people are solely responsible for its existence. What you're doing here today is a perfect example of systemic racism. As individuals, you may say that you are not a racist, but I'm here to tell you that the action, the collective action that you are taking with this resolution is perpetuating systemic racism in Alabama, and you apparently are clueless to that fact. When you say, in your resolution, that slavery and racism are betrayals of the founding principles, and that individuals should not be punished or discriminated against because of past actions committed by members of the same race or sex, but we should move forward to create a better future together, it shows that you are clueless as to what is going on in Alabama schools. In 2016, your own compliance review department came into Birmingham and told them that they were doing wrong by their English second language students. And they gave us a month to fix the problem and get them in their home schools, from December to January. I said, "This is wrong." Everybody said, "Teri, this is what the State Department of Education does to us." I said, "No, this can't happen." I studied, I learned, you know what the policy is for compliance review? Things that are found to be incorrect? You have till the end of the fiscal year to fix it. They had until September 30th to fix the problem that your compliance review department had. And your compliance review department knew that. But no, they gave them a month from December to January to get it fixed. I had to call the state school board, I called the governor's office, I called legislators, I called everybody that would listen, and it still took us weeks for them finally to say, "We were wrong, and we are not going to do that." So please, do not tell me that we should move forward, because you all are making it glaringly clear that you are the ones collectively that are not ready to move forward. Further down the resolution, you state that you value and promote healthy research debate and dialogue. However, nothing you are doing in this resolution backs that statement up. If you did, you would understand that culturally responsive curriculum reflects the history and background of all students and empowers students to value all cultures, not just their own. And that research has shown that culturally responsive curriculum can engage more students and motivate them to a higher level of academic achievement. That is what a non-discrimination resolution looks like, and that is what Birmingham City Schools passed on Tuesday. I have a copy for each one of you that I'm going to ask get passed to you. So thank you for your time here today, and I hope that you will seriously reconsider the systemic racism that you are furthering by codifying your resolution. Thank you.
Okay, that, I believe that's all the speakers. One last call for Mr. Stimson. Okay, he's not present. Again, this is a very, very passionate issue. We appreciate all the comments and all the public comments that we've had today. Thank you all for showing up, and I know the board appreciates it, the board appreciates your comments. But at this time, Governor, that concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Swann, and we appreciate everyone showing up to speak to us today. Moving on.
Are you going to provide a meeting for, to still submit their written testimony to the board? It was stated that we could submit it if you were present today.
If you want to give me that.
Sure.
I'll take it.
Thank you, County. It's supposed to be asked in some regard. Thank you, County. Yes.
Item A, unfinished business. Ms. Thornton, is there any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
Before we move on to new business, I'd like to present two proclamations from the governor. The first one proclaims October 2021 as dyslexia awareness month in Alabama. And the second proclamation proclaims October 2021 as manufacturing month in Alabama. We move to new business.
Thank you, Attorney.
We will now consider a resolution to adopt agenda items A through K related to the 2020 and 2021 Presidential Awards for Mathematics and Science in Mass. We have a motion to adopt the resolution to approve items A through K in Mass. Is that second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Segal?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Congratulations to our 2020 and 2021 President Award winners. We will take individual photos with the finalists and their respective board members at the luncheon later this morning. We'll now consider a resolution to recognize October as Dyslexia Awareness Month.
So moved. Bell?
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is that second?
Yes, sir, it's second.
Any discussion? Each member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Segal?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We have several people in the audience today who support our work in making sure that children with dyslexia learn to read. We do thank you. We will take a photo with everyone present for dyslexia awareness at the conclusion of the meeting. Item M, we'll now consider a resolution to recognize October 1 through 31, 2021 as manufacturing month. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second in a discussion. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Segal?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution endorsing Alabama School Bus Safety Week as October 18 through 22, 2021. Is there, do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Chestnut.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Segal?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. We'll now consider a resolution to recognize October 11 through 15, 2021 as school lunch week in Alabama schools. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Segal?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Item P is in pop-up. We will now consider a resolution to proclaim October as statewide parent engagement month in Alabama.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a comment. Madam Chairman, Governor, this is an issue that's very significant to me as a representative district aide of the Alabama School Board Association. In recent activities, the National School Board Association has attacked people who present to local school boards and wants them to declare as domestic terrorists. Just as we welcome the input today, no matter what the comments, I think local school boards have that responsibility. I am a former superintendent and an elected state school board member, and there's no way that I would consider any comment, however negative, that is made to me as terrorism. And to do that, to infer that we are terrorists, that our U.S. Attorney General, Mr. Garland, would involve the Federal Bureau of Investigation, is the antithesis to what I consider our responsibility as public servants. I know that there's dissent in the Alabama Association School Board with this resolution, and this very resolution that happened to be coming up speaks very loudly to our desire to accept and to encourage public input, not only of parents, but any group that wants to come before us or me. I welcome that. Thank you, Governor, for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Are you ready for the question? We have a motion to adopt the resolution and a second. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Segal?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Last week, I was proud to visit KDS School up in Marshall County, and that's the DAR, Dole's American Revolution School in Gunnysville, to celebrate school lunch week. And I was very impressed by the school garden and agricultural department that they have at that school. The students sell what they grow to the school cafeteria through the Farm to School Program that was established under the leadership of Commissioner Rick Pate of the Alabama Department of Agriculture and Industries. I look forward to supporting this program so we can see more schools participating in programs like this first-class program. I grow, in this case, I'm growing lettuce. I ate lettuce, their lettuce, for lunch that day, and it was right tasty. We'll now consider a resolution to authorize review of education preparation programs for the University of Alabama related to a new master's degree program for elementary STEM teachers, as well as a new double A as well as a new double-A program for mathematics specialists.
Is that Richardson mobile program?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. We'll now consider approval of the fiscal year 2023 Foundation Program appropriation request. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae? Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Item S. We'll now consider adoption of the Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-2-1-01 pertaining to annual apportionment of foundation program funds.
No approval.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second, Siegler.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion.
Governor, I'd just like to say that this has been an issue for local school boards that I have been speaking with and formally served on for at least 11 years. And I'm very happy and thankful for the leadership inside the department and with the legislature to move this forward. It's very important.
Thank you. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. We'll now consider adoption to repeal Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-2-1-02 pertaining to annual apportionment of current units. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, we'll now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider adoption of amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-040-040-02 pertaining to certain teaching techniques as a permanent rule. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in a discussion.
Yes.
You have a discussion?
Yes. As I've stated earlier concerning this resolution, I cannot support a resolution that does not afford the opportunity for the entire truth to be told. It saddens me that we're at this point in 2021, and we have not progressed to the point that we cannot talk about things that may appear to be uncomfortable. I know that we will never conquer what we refuse to confront. And I know also that the only truth that will set us free is the whole truth. Unfortunately, this resolution includes the teaching of yoga, which is okay. But I cannot support a resolution that will not own up to the fact that there are some racial issues in our country and in our state. I don't agree that our children will feel indifferent. I'm a victim of racism, and I don't feel inferior. It motivated me to be my best self. And I believe that the same will happen if we allow teachers to teach the truth. Thank you.
Governor, I'd like to make a statement.
Senator, Dr. Richardson?
To you deals with two issues. The first one, yoga. I'm very much in support of us teaching yoga in our K-12 schools. However, the second part of this code change relates to intellectual freedom and non-discrimination. In August, I voted against the resolution because then I stated critical race theory is not even taught in our K-12 schools. It's a theory that's taught in law schools as well as graduate schools. Secondly, I said that history has been taught for years in our schools. Our young people know about slavery. They know about civil rights. Where does this leave our teachers? We talk about autonomy. We talk about critical thinking. If we're going to determine what they teach, where is autonomy? And lastly, I feel we have moved forward in some issues. But if we do not reflect back on the history, we're destined or doomed to repeat it. Thank you, Governor.
Governor, may I comment, please?
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes, I want to clarify something. I am an indigenous American. My skin color may not be what you perceive an indigenous American is, but that's what I am. And my explanation, my desire, is that we teach equity among all of us. If there's any group of persons that are in the continental United States that have been subjected to mistreatment and total acquisition of their lands, it is we indigenous Americans. I have taught my children and my grandchildren, no matter what their situation or what their ancestor's situation is, they have the opportunity to achieve. As a school administrator, superintendent, and teacher, I have always advocated those equitable treatments and historical perspectives. And this resolution is a continuation of a resolution previously adopted. And this will make it a permanent part of our administrative code. Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, and thank you all for those additional comments. Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, we'll please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
No.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
No.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegler?
Yes.
Vote carries, Governor.
Beg your pardon?
Vote carries.
Vote carries.
Yes, ma'am.
Vote carries. You're out of order. You're out of order. Please be seated.
She's not even from Alabama. Move the agenda, Governor, please.
Ms. Thornton reports that the vote passed.
Yes, the vote carries.
We are, we're, we're on item V as invicta. Alabama Public Charter School Commission nominees. In accordance with Alabama School Choice and Student Opportunity Act, Lieutenant Governor Amesworth submitted the names of two candidates, Ms. Kate White and Ms. Julia Ann McCully, to fill one open position on the Alabama Public Charter School Commission. We carried the vote over last month for this position. And we have other nominees by Mr. Speaker McCutcheon, but we'll get to those in just a minute. Right now, let's vote on the nominees of Lieutenant Governor Amesworth.
Maybe they are carriers.
We ready?
Ms. Thornton just called the roll the two candidates, Ms. Kate White and Ms. Julia Ann McCully, to fill one position on the Alabama Public Charter School Commission.
Mrs. Bell?
Um, Mrs. McCully.
Dr. Chestnut?
Mrs. McCully.
Governor Ivy?
Ms. White.
Mrs. McRae?
Ms. White.
Dr. Reynolds?
Ms. White.
Dr. Richardson?
Ms. McCully.
Mrs. West?
Mrs. White.
Mrs. Siegler?
Ms. McCully.
We have a tie, Governor. Four-four.
All right, we'll carry this one over till next month. Speaker McCutcheon has submitted the names of four candidates for two open positions on the Alabama Public Charter School Commission. Ms. Marla Green and Ms. Jenny Ives are Speaker McCutcheon's nominees for the first open position. We'll vote on those first, and then we'll come back and do the other two.
Mrs. Bell?
Epstein.
Dr. Chestnut?
Marla Green.
Governor Ivy?
Marla Green.
Mrs. McRae?
Marla Green.
Dr. Reynolds?
Marla Green.
Dr. Richardson?
Marla Green.
Mrs. West?
Marla Green.
Mrs. Siegler?
Marla Green.
Marla Green, Governor.
Marla Green is the nominee there. All right, Mr. McCutcheon's other two nominees are Ms. Lakeisha Wheeler and Ms. Jessica Hammons for the second open position. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Epstein.
Dr. Chestnut?
Lakeisha Wheeler.
Governor Ivy?
Lakeisha Wheeler.
Mrs. McRae?
Ms. Wheeler.
Dr. Reynolds?
Ms. Wheeler.
Dr. Richardson?
Lakeisha Wheeler.
Mrs. West?
Jessica Hammons.
Mrs. Siegler?
Jessica Hammons.
Ms. Wheeler, Governor.
All right, Ms. Wheeler gets the vote for the second position, second open position. Is there a motion to adopt the results of the roll call as the will of the board and to appoint the winners thereof as appointees to the Alabama Public Charter School Commission?
I so move, Governor.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yvette Richardson, second.
Is there any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, again, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Epstein.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae? Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegler?
Yes.
Vote carries, Governor.
Thank you, and congratulations to our two new public charter school commissioners. We'll now select the Alabama State Board of Education delegate with the Alabama Association of School Boards 2021 Convention and Delegate Assembly.
Governor, I'd like to take the opportunity to nominate our vice president, Ms. Yvette Richardson, to assume this position representing us to the Alabama Association of School Boards.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Richardson has been nominated. Nominations do not require second. Any more nominations?
I'd like to make that a unanimous decision of the board.
You'd like what?
To recommend that it's a unanimous decision of the board.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
So we have a unanimous decision of the board to name Dr. Yvette Richardson for the delegate in convention.
Thank you.
Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share?
Governor, we need to make one legal change, and that is to add Ms. McRae to the roll if there are no objections, because she came in, she was caught in traffic, she came in a few minutes after the roll. And then to ask, Ms. McRae, would you also like to be added as a yes vote on adopting the agenda and the minutes of the last month?
Yes, please.
Okay, so with your consent and the consent of the board, we'll add her on those. Thank you. And that's the only legal matter, Governor. Would you like for me to go ahead and jump into my report?
That'll be great.
Okay, we have just a couple of things I want to mention. We've got another video for you this month. We're going to show in just a minute. But I want to mention a couple of things. So first, a matter of COVID. We don't talk as much about it, thank goodness, as we were doing a year ago. But just to let you know, as our numbers are continuing to decline from a high, or at the, in early August of about 9,000 in one week to this, when these are reported publicly, which you're getting advance notice, but it'll be right at 1,000. So a tremendous drop in the number of both students and adults with positive cases in our schools. And that's, you know, fortunately, a drop in the spike, but also the tremendous work of our school districts and all that they are doing from nurses to teachers to administrators to make sure that we keep our students and faculty members safe. So I'm thrilled to report that this morning. I also want to make a note, it is School Lunch Week, and yet all the news is that there's no food available. We, there have been some supply chain issues, most of those dealing with a lack of drivers and warehouse workers. In fact, one of our big suppliers, we have two main suppliers of food to our cafeterias, and both of them have had troubles. One of them lost so many workers that they actually had to close for a day or so. And you know that gets you behind. So they now, they made last week 108,000 deliveries. And then a normal week, they would make about 60,000. So most of that has been caught up. In fact, I heard a news story this morning that I know for a fact was true eight days ago, but is no longer true. But, you know, the news just keeps recycling that. But just know that those supply chain issues are being caught up. Our vendors are doing everything they can to try to get food. We've done, we've had schools to go to the warehouse to pick up food. We've, we've had bus drivers driving trucks to get food. So we've done a lot of things to make sure that happens. There are still occasionally a few issues here and there. And our CNP program does an amazing job working with them on a day-to-day basis to make sure that we have food for children. So we do want to celebrate School Lunch Week. And as Governor said, she got to go have lunch with some young boys and girls up at the DAR School in Marshall County last week. And I think Dr. McCarty got to join her there and encourage all of you, when you get a chance, doesn't have to be this week, to, but join us in a school lunch program. We'd love to have you to visit a cafeteria when it's good time for you. Then I also want to make, make mention, the foundation program request this morning that the board approved is a $544 million increase. And we, we're going after every penny. We think that our, our teachers and schools certainly deserve the best. We think that our, our teachers and schools certainly deserve the best, and, and I appreciate the board working through that process with us over the last several months and getting what I think is a very strong budget request to go over to the Executive Budget Office. So it is Dyslexia Awareness Month also, along with Manufacturing Month and several things we celebrate in October. But we have lots of folks here in red today to celebrate the fact that we all want every child to learn to read and to read at a high level as early as possible, no later than third grade. We talk so much about third grade reading. I know that the ladies and gentlemen that are here, they, they remind me all the time. It's not, you don't wait till third grade to do it. It's by third grade, we hope. But there's so much good work going on right now with Alabama Reading Initiative, with the Dyslexia Advisory Council, and, and who's going to be joining us and doing a presentation here in just a few minutes. So without any further ado, what we want to present to you is a video that are actual children from this past summer, summer reading camp. So we'll kick up our ARI video here. Just remember, we're not talking about children going to summer school. We're talking about children going to camp. It's all about making them enjoy it, and I appreciate what all these folks have done. And Governor, I'll conclude my report just by asking all the folks who are here to celebrate Dyslexia Awareness Month, if I can say it. Many of them wearing red. Will they all please stand so we can acknowledge them? As soon as we adjourn, we do want to take a quick picture. If y'all will just gather up here right in front of the stage, and we'll kind of all get in and take a picture. And that concludes my report, Governor.
Thank you. Item K. The next elementary and secondary education meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will be held on Wednesday, November 10, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in the Gordon Parsons Building Auditorium. The work session will immediately follow the board meeting in room P103 in the Gordon Parsons Building. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Uh, Governor.
We have a motion and a second.
Uh, may I, may I please ask the question? I know this is extremely unusual, but I would like to ask the question before the board is formally adjourned.
I can't understand what you're saying.
I know this is highly unusual, but I would like to ask a question before the board is formally adjourned.
On what subject?
Um, on something, Dr. Richards, Reynolds, I'm sorry, I can't say it in my glasses. Uh, something Dr. Reynolds said. Uh, earlier, you stated your opposition to any law that would declare outburst at a school meeting a terrorist activity. Yeah, when a black man has an outburst, you make this statement. Well, maybe they, we should call them terrorists. And also, I would like to ask your tribal affiliations and do your chief things. My tribal affiliation is the Cherokee Tribe of Northeast Southland. I have a car in my wallet. I would like to ask your affiliation.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We are adjourned.